Thank you for joining us this evening at the Reifton School for our voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. We will be filing Policy Number 903, adopted March 30th, 2020, so that this meeting proceeds in an orderly and efficient manner. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. The Board met in executive session on Tuesday, July 13th, to discuss safety and personnel issues. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Feike, if you could please do our vocal.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Hunter Ahrens.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
Puri Miller.
Here.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Sharon McLendon. Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Mike Chapina. Michelle Stratton.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. As you know, we are in full swing with our Tips and Talons camp. We're about halfway through, a little over four weeks so far. The students have had the opportunity to go to the zoo, to the Reading Public Museum and Planetarium, to the Kempton Railroad, as well as participate in both Tips and Talons at the school. They're having a wonderful time, and we very much appreciate the support that we've gotten to make that camp possible. At the district office, we're working hard on working on class assignments for next year, staffing, and all of the preparations it takes to get a school year up and running. So we'll continue to see personnel items throughout. At this meeting tonight, the August 3rd meeting, there is a special voting meeting in advance of for personnel and for contracts. And then at the August 17th meeting, we expect to have personnel items on that agenda as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Because the Board values and recognizes the importance of public opinion on educational issues, the Board now invites any community or staff member to make public comment, as registered this evening. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of public comment, please follow the following guidelines as outlined in our policy. Before beginning, please clearly state your name and address, and then limit your comments to four minutes. All comments should be addressed to me as Board President. Please do not address or question Board members individually. Board members may choose to respond or clarify facts, but they are under no obligation to do so. In respect for your community and for our Board members, I ask that you present your comments with decorum and with consideration of our dedication to serving this community. Those who choose not to follow the guidelines or become disruptive may be asked to leave. The Board welcomes thoughtful and constructive comments. Mr. Morgan. Ms. Tasker.
Can you hear me? You good? Okay. Lisa Tasker, 1022 Allen Road. I'm starting off with a statement made by Dr. Ben Carson. Growing up poor in Detroit, if I had believed as critical race theory proponents claimed that my destiny was based on my race, I would not be where I am today. We cannot allow CRT to rob American children of that same hope that was instilled in me. Recently, author and professor Ibram Kendi, creator of so-called anti-racist doctrines that lie at the core of CRT, has claimed that CRT is an imagined monster concocted by conservatives as a scare tactic to deny talking about race. This is clearly false. To start, it's important to understand that the term anti-racism, as used by Kendi, which sounds non-threatening enough, does not mean what you think. Indeed, it is far from being anti-racist. The ideology promoted by Kendi and fellow travelers is anything but. It redefines reality to assign guilt and blame based solely on race, classifying persons in such a manner that is literally the definition of racism. End quote. Now, this is me. "In the United States of America, our citizens are made up of an extraordinary number of vast backgrounds and cultures, and all have identical rights. There are majorities and minorities among all of us. If you choose to keep count and call yourself a minority based on your race or skin color, that's an interesting fact. However, if you choose to use that fact and claim you can't achieve personal success because another race is more entitled, that's a whole different story. Teaching CRT is not about educating any of our children for success and not about promoting a good work ethic. It promotes segregation, causes confusion, and manipulates children into guilt and submission." Parents, critical race theory is actually promoted on the official Pennsylvania Public Schools government page. Our Pennsylvania government body is right now redesigning our state college system to accommodate it. You can also find these same ideals on the CDC website. It's everywhere. Unfortunately, many arrogant politicians, professors, and media outlets have been intimidating innocent people and pushing this "woe is me" view on life for some time. They have used it to try and keep significant amount of people exactly where they want them and use them over and over to achieve their own successes. That is the definition of oppression. They are the ones doing it. Teaching critical race theory, or whatever new term initialization they are using now that means the same thing, are the ones doing it. CRT and protesting groups claim you must react because you are now somehow channeling the pain from your ancestors and need to blame the white people of today for it. Equal rights for all and the heroes that led that era are a major part of our history. They were black and white Americans that fought passionately and paved the way for every American citizen, regardless of color, gender, nationality, to be able to do anything they want, and they deserve the credit. Not a race-biased group of finger pointers dredging up old, bad feelings that had nothing to do with anyone in this day and age personally, and assuming somehow demeaning innocent children will make them feel better and call it a class. This is not, or will ever be, your movement. You have no business as a professional educator to make a student feel responsible for any historical event. Teach them that in our history, you will find regret and respect for all the people and events that have happened, and that as a country, we have learned to overcome many mistakes. Us together have made the United States the most respected and powerful country in the world, no matter what anyone tries to tell you. You must challenge students..."
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Gardella.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Gardella of 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. Great, thank you. All right, is this better? All right. My name is Mary Beth Gardella of 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm here tonight as a member of the Berks County Chapter of Moms for Liberty. We are a parent-led, nonpartisan organization with 65 chapters across 25 states, and we are growing. Our mission is to hold our school boards accountable for the decisions that affect our children. Over the last decade or more, the lines between parental authority and education have been blurred. Moms for Liberty is here to sharpen those lines. Our parental rights and our constitutional rights do not end at the classroom door. We do not co-parent with the government. Our responsibility as parents and grandparents is to be fully involved, informed, and engaged in our kids' education and environment at school. It is also our responsibility to guide the character building of our children for the installation of our family structures, our family values, and our morals. The school district's responsibility is to provide a quality education for our children in math, science, history, writing, physical education, the education they need to compete in the world. It is not the school district's responsibility to promote a particular political ideology, enforce a particular worldview, boost political activist groups, or to drive life-altering decisions on its students. In the past, trust has been extended on the part of the parents. We assume that you are working in the best interests of the family and the children. COVID has been used as a political weapon against our children and has been an assault on our families. With the summer announcement of the two National Teachers Unions, we now know that you are actively working against parents to implement ideologies that go against many beliefs. We will not be fooled any longer. We are not uninformed. We are here, and we will be requesting and reviewing all curriculum, and there is nothing wrong with that. In fact, you should be encouraging and welcoming the community into the school. We will be watching what is displayed, what is read, presented, promoted, and enforced on our children. We will voice displeasure with any inappropriate, divisive, politically motivated curriculum or policies that conflict with our parental authority. Lastly, we will approach you with all the respect that you extend to us. We encourage and will work with you to build mutual trust, but it will not be easily given. I hope that you, as Board members, and the Superintendent, will approach Moms for Liberty with that same respect and willingness to work together. I am requesting that the Board President directs the Superintendent to put the August meeting of the Equity and Excellence Committee meeting on the calendar with the time and location so that the public can attend. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mozo.
First of all, I just want to say, with all the money you guys take from all of us, you guys can get some new microphones that actually work. Secondly, I'm not going to repeat anything I said at the last meeting because you can review it on YouTube, but I do want to reiterate that...
I'm sorry, could you say your address, please, for the record? Thank you.
Everybody knows where I live, St. Lawrence Avenue, right down the street, five minutes down. Anyway, I just want to reiterate...
Could you state your address for the record, please?
3210 St. Lawrence Avenue, five minutes down the road. Basically, what I want to reiterate is, all of us here, plus everybody that didn't come, all voted for all of you. I didn't vote for any of you, but they did. And your job is to represent us as a community. We pay taxes for this school, all the schools in this district, everything that has to do with the school, the taxes pay for it. So, with that being said, you're supposed to represent us, and you're not doing that. You haven't been doing that. I don't know how long some of you have been on the Board, but you haven't been representing the community, the community that I live in. Have they been representing you? Any of you? They haven't been representing us. So, the question here is, we want the mask mandate gone, completely gone. None of that verbiage that says, "Well, we'll get rid of it today because the CDC says it's okay, but later on down the road, if something happens, we might reinstate it." We don't want that garbage. We don't want it in that paperwork, that plan. We don't want it at all. What we want is masks to be optional for everybody across the board. Everybody. So if you want to come in that door and you want to have a mask on, you put it on. If you don't, nobody cares. Literally, nobody cares, other than you people because you're trying to mandate it. And with that being said, if you're not going to represent us, there's doors right there. You guys can resign. You can walk out the door. Any of these doors, resign today, and then we'll pick some new people to take your spot and get the job done the way it's supposed to be done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mozo. Mr. Volmer.
Dave Volmer from 335 South Ballstown Road. Just sitting back here watching the Board during these comments. You got Mr. Miller over there, looks like he's half-sleeping. Doesn't even address the people speaking. It's ridiculous. And some of you on this side of the room, like this woman here, she's not even looking at me. What's up with that? Well, you look at us, engage with us. We want to be engaged with this Board, okay? We have a right to take a look at the curriculum, to make demands as the parents of the community. You represent us, okay? We're sick and tired of this stuff where you sit over there and you act like you're sleeping. It's disgusting. You know, you shrug your shoulders, oh, you know? It's a bunch of BS, and we're sick of it. And we're not going to stand for this anymore. And we're going to pull this community together, and we're just going to eliminate all of the positions that we need to with new people, okay? Because we're going to fight, and we're going to be a thorn in your side until you're transparent and until you listen to us. We are the community, and that's what you're in that position to do. Not what you think is best, it's what we think is best. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we will now be moving forward into our meeting, onto the Board meeting minutes. If there is no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's school board meetings. June 8th, special voting meeting, June 8th, committee of the whole meeting, and June 22nd, Board voting meeting. Hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. If there is no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the June 2021 Treasurers' report and payment request dated June 23rd, 2021 through July 20th, 2021. Hearing no objection, the Treasurers' report and payment requests are approved. Moving on to the Education Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Under Item A, we have the enrollment report for the month of June 2021. That's an attachment. Item B, early graduation request. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the early graduation, January 2022, request for student number 7182122, per district policy 217 AR2.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, Item C, Memorandums of Understanding for Safe Schools. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve Memorandums of Understanding with the Exeter Police and Central Berks Police Departments as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Safe Schools Submission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to offer my thanks to both departments, and thank you guys for that work, and I hope that you'll convey that back to the chief and to the rest of your guys. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, Item D, Health and Safety Plan. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Exeter Township School District Health and Safety Plan effective July 21st, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, there's no speaking from the community at this moment.
I have a question. I just wanted confirmation. In regards to if the, if it changes with us going to hire amounts of COVID in our area, what will the protocol be for changing the mask mandate, if that can be specified?
Well, there's two possibilities. One is that the state or the federal government would put forth requirements, and then we would, you know, have to look what those requirements are, consult with our attorneys, and determine if we have to make changes accordingly. The second one would be that they don't make any kind of mandates, but they do make recommendations, in which case our pandemic task force would meet, come up with recommendations to present to the Board, and then we would present those to the Board for the Board to vote on.
So it would come to a voting meeting at that point to make that determination?
If it was an LEA decision at that point, yes.
Dr. Minor, is the pandemic task force the same people that were on a year ago, and can you go over who that's composed of, please?
Yes, I don't have the entirety of the list in front of me. Mrs. Harris might be able to call up that list quickly, but basically... Oh, not specifically, okay. So, there are, there's Board member representation, there's teachers' representation, there's support staff representation, there is an emergency room doctor from St. Joseph's Hospital, there is a doctor from Reading Pediatrics. There are a number of building principals and other administrators. It's about 20, 25 people altogether, but they are listed in the original version of our Health and Safety Plan, the people who are on that pandemic task force. And the purpose of that, it's not a voting body, it's just a body that considers the information that's coming out and then advises for plans that are ultimately submitted to the Board for their vote.
Dr. Minor, just a quick question about the school bus mask mandate. Is that mandate coming from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Department of Education at this point right now? I mean, is that something that school districts have an option on, or is this something that is considered to be, if we were to, let's say, not implement it, that that would put us into some kind of a compromised position as a school district?
So, as you know, Pennsylvania dropped their mask mandate at the end of June, and then they said, you know, that school districts could do the same. And then there was a Dear Colleague letter that came out from Noe Ortega, the Secretary of Education, that stated that the CDC was mandating masks on all forms of public transportation and had specifically called out, and in fact, if you go to the CDC FAQs, it specifically calls out school buses as public transportation and therefore requiring whether it's interstate or intrastate that masks be worn on public transportation. So, that is, that is from, you know, Noe Ortega, who's in charge of PDE, that CDC language. In our Health and Safety Plan, in the event that the CDC would change that language or the state would make some change, then we would follow suit, and that's already considered in the Health and Safety Plan. So, there may be legal challenges to the CDC, et cetera, so wherever that ends up, we would just follow suit accordingly.
Thank you, Dr. Minor.
Excuse me. We, excuse me, this is not a period for public comment. This, this is not a period for, if we don't...
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Comments? Go ahead.
No, it's not. Because it's kind of funny. So, I just wanted to say quickly that I appreciate the work that, Dr. Minor?
Mr. Mozo, if you cannot, I'm sorry. We have rules here, and if you can't follow the rules, I will have to ask you to leave. I will give you another opportunity. Please sit down. We have rules here, and if you can't follow the rules, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Hunter, please go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that the administration has done.
I'm sorry, we need to, I'm sorry, I apologize. We, we need to, I would, I would ask that this gentleman be escorted out. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So I wanted to continue quick. I wanted to thank the administration for the work that they have done. And in addition to that, I think that we're making a good step in the right direction by making the masks optional in the buildings. I think that this is exactly what we need to be doing. The CDC does order all school districts, and we have a responsibility to adhere to the law, and that's exactly what we're doing. And I want to say thank you to the administration for doing that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Go ahead, Dr. McLendon.
Okay, under Item E, Fontis and Penel Classroom Purchases, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of Fontis and Penel classroom materials for grades five and six in the amount of $74,401.38. Items will be paid for through the ESER grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, Item F, Agreement with Aviana Healthcare. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between the Exeter Township School District and Pediatric Services of America Incorporated (DBA) Aviana Healthcare to provide nursing services to the district for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $55 per hour per nurse for RN and LPN services, and $25 per hour per nurse for PCA services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item G, Agreement with Richard J. Karen Foundation. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between the Richard J. Karen Foundation and the Exeter Township School District to provide SAP services for the 2021-2022 school year at the cost of $87,841.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We just have some clarification in terms of the personnel that are involved. Is that two positions, two full-time positions? Mrs. Harris.
No, it's not two full-time positions. So it's 72.5 hours per week, and that's comprised of 32.5 hours at the high school, which is one full-time person from Karen, and then we have 14 hours at the junior high, and then 6.5 hours at each of the rest of the buildings. Junior High in Reifton are covered by one person a couple of days a week, and then the three elementaries are covered by one person a couple of days a week.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mrs. Wilson, the meeting is out of order. Can you restore me, order to the meeting?
Again, I would like to remind everyone that this is the board doing our business. And I thank you for being here to make options. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the public comment section is over for tonight. Would any board member like to take a motion to take a recess?
I'd suggest at this time, a session in a recess.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any abstentions?
What's that? Personnel's gonna take forever reading all that. It's gonna take forever reading every one of those.
Oh, I know. Do I have to read them all? Let's read them single thing, do I? I can't, I don't have it here.
It's not on here?
I, because I obviously have the computer, so I have everything.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't think we never read all of them anyway.
No, no, but you have to read each motion.
It's here tonight. I'm just gonna say, like, certified staff listed, support staff listed.
Yeah, I would... Yeah.
Oh my gosh, that is so long.
And we have another one on the third, which probably could be in so long.
This much stuff you're saying?
Well, it's just personnel on the third, and there's a couple things with finance.
Okay, well, there's no way I'm gonna win this time, so I'm gonna do it with all this heat going on. There's way too much heat in this room. Where's the love?
Yeah. And you know, it's a full moon week. Full moon week. Twenty-third. How many years? Oh, okay.
I really should've spoke sooner. I don't think I could have, though. I don't think I could've.
Okay. Okay. All right, we are gonna reconvene our meeting by voting on the item that's already on the table. Letter G. There is a motion, yes.
Call a question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, item H, Field Trips Beyond the Sixty Mile Radius. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following field trips beyond the sixty mile radius. And we, under that, we have items one and two.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item I, Conference Requests. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following conference requests, and there is one request under there. Item one.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the Education Committee portion of the meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Personnel Committee is Mr. Japina, he is not present this evening. Mrs. Stratton, could you please read that for us?
Gladly. Thank you, Mr. Japina, for leaving me with a long one tonight. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the creation of the following positions. One, Assistant Director of Technology, Act 93, twelve-month position per the attached job description. This position will replace the Application Specialist Position. Two, Supervisor of Academic Support, Act 93, twelve-month position per the attached job description. This position will be funded through the Pupil Services Budget. Three, Supervisor of Academic Enrichment, Act 93, twelve-month position per the attached job description. This position will be funded through the Pupil Services Budget. Four, Director of Social, Emotional, and Academic Interventions, Act 93, twelve-month position per the attached job description. This position will be funded through the Esser Grant through the 2024 and through federal title and state RTL grants beyond 2024. Five, Intervention Specialist at the Senior High School, ETEA contract. This position will be funded through the Esser Grant through 2024 and through federal title and state RTL grants beyond 2024.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. I, first of all, just want to thank Dr., I almost said Dr. Martin again. Dr. Minor for the work in really reorganizing some of our administrative staff, and it's been a consistent theme in your goal. So I want to say thank you for that work. Could you elaborate a little bit on the funding source for the Pupil Services Budget items and just kind of where those savings are coming from and how we're affording those?
I would let Mrs. Harris talk about the Pupil Services Budget since that's her area of expertise.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. So if you recall, when we did restructuring of our behavior supports for the district, we allocated some of those monies for intervening services or intervention services. And so that's where that funding is coming from for those two positions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
If there are no objections, I'm going to read and group together items B, C, D, E, F, and G. I'm gonna read them all. Are there any objections to me doing that before I read? You're okay. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors, for item B, approve the elimination of one Application Specialist Position in the IT Department. C, for retirements, the senior high school biology teacher. The next one is part-time general cafeteria worker. For D, there are resignations as listed for a certified staff, support staff. For E, there are appointments for administrative staff, certified staff, support staff, and support substitutes. And for F, change of status, as listed, it is administrative staff, support staff, extracurricular staff. And G, we have leave of absences. And there are two employees listed. And then there is executive content, there are two listed there as well. And I believe I just went through G, and then we'll pick up with the rest if that's okay.
Second.
Mrs. Stratton, when you said there's executive comment, that content, that's not anything additional, that's just referring back to numbers one and two. Okay. Okay. So any other, any discussion?
I just wanted to identify that we have a couple of alumni who are coming back to do different positions, including, I think Tia Cosgrove on here is a class of 2013 graduate coming back to teach at Exeter, and I think that's very exciting. And we have a number of alumni who are coming back, and I think that needs to be celebrated.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And the final three, it's gonna be H, I, and J, is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following additional support staff summer hours. There are three staff listed. I, Teacher on Special Assignment. It is the, recommended that the Board of School Directors approve five additional days at a per TM rate of $489.74 per day for Mark Ricketts, Teacher on Special Assignment. And J, Course Request, is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of school requests.
Second? Hunter, second? Yeah. Okay. There're motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Stratton, moving on.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry. Did we mention the names of those retiring?
I did not.
Can we mention the names?
Absolutely. You gave these to me because I'm not good at announcing names, and I apologize, because I'm gonna put, maybe some will be better at saying these names than me. All right, so the first one, Certified Staff, Lorraine Serapo, Serapero, which is, and I believe I did mention, that was a senior high school biology teacher, retiring at the end of the 2020-21 school year after twenty-five years of service. Early retirement incentive recipient. The second one? Darlene, I apologize, Darlene Beal, part-time general cafeteria worker, worker at Lorraine Elementary, who is retiring at the end of the 2020-2021 school year after twenty years of service. So thank you very much to both of those ladies. And the third one is Christine Miller. Thank you, Christine, for having a name that I can pronounce. She is a paraprofessional special ed aide at the senior high school, retiring effective July 9th, 2021, and she has eighteen years of service. So thank you to all three of them. And thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Ahrens.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the attached list of budget transfers in the amount of $148,423.64.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors nominate John Fidler at Exeter's PSBA delegate to participate in the PSBA Assembly being held on October 23rd, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you, John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the two policies on the agenda for second reading, that's Policy 810.1 and Policy 810.3, both having to do with school, school vehicles and school bus drivers.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms., Dr. Hamburger, and moving on to Dr. Herring.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a Sports Medicine Services Agreement with Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates for the 21-22 school year at a cost of $17,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to our reports, Equity and Excellence at Exeter Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Okay, we did not have a meeting this month, so there is no report.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Miller, Exeter Community Education Foundation.
So the only thing I have to report is that we're, don't forget about the, the, the ECAF Golf Tournament on August the 6th. We're also gonna have, have some tickets for sale for the golf ball drop. Please come to me if you have any, wanna buy one, they're only five dollars.
Mr. Miller, I'd like to buy one. I support ECAF.
All right, thank you. I'll get you some.
Okay, BCTC, Mr. Fidler.
Go ahead. Hello?
Yep, Mr. Fidler, do you have anything to say about BCTC?
Yeah, the JOC did not meet this month, so I have nothing to report. We'll pick up the meeting again next month.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving, moving on to BCIU, Board of Directors, Dr. Hamburger.
Mrs. Wilson, there was no BCIU meeting this month. Our meetings will resume next month, so there's no report.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything in regards to the Legislative Liaison role?
Nothing on the legislative scene, the legislature's recessed, so not much to report at this point.
And then Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Ahrens.
No report.
Okay. Is there any board member that would like to be heard at this time?
I would. Kind of second guessing myself here, I'm usually pretty quiet at these meetings. Gonna be honest, I'm feeling uncomfortable. I'm not used to meetings like this, so just gonna be honest with everyone, so if you can just give me some, some kindness and graceful, I speak, I would appreciate it. can just give me some, some kindness and grace while I speak, I would appreciate it. I just first want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Board members, the officers, everyone that is in this room, everyone that is listening, everyone that's going to listen to this meeting. We all care about kids. I think we can agree on that. I would first like to shed some life into the life of a school board member. I receive many emails from the community. I may not respond, but I read every single one of them. For every five emails that I receive telling me how harmful masks are, I receive another five emails telling me to keep masks on kids at school. So I ask you, which way do I vote? Mask haters say, look at the science. Those who want masks for safety say, look at the science. So I ask you again, which way do I vote? Then I'm told, well, listen to me, because if you care about kids, you'll do it my way. A few minutes later, I get an email from the opposing side saying the same thing. So I ask you again, which way do I vote? It gets better. And keep in mind, I have three small children, I have a family, I grew up here. On social media, I'm told I'm corrupt. I'm not listening. I have no concern, and those are the nice things that are said about people that don't know me. I've also been asked how I can sleep at night, and trust me, they weren't asking because they were concerned with me agonizing over these decisions. I promise you, the challenge of making these decisions does not fall lightly on any of us. I can also promise you that what I try to do when I come to these meetings and why I probably don't speak very much is because I really try hard to listen with the intent to understand versus listening with the intent to reply. I try to teach my children that. I'm gonna say it again. I try really hard to listen with the intent to understand versus listening with the intent to reply. I believe the people in this room have more in common than not. Some may listen to this meeting and hear differences in opinions. Some hear anger, some hear frustration. I hear a passion for our love for children. I hope you hear that, too, because we all have that in common. There will always be different roads to get to the same place. May we remember that the end of the road is a place where we all want kids to be safe and loved, and an example of that love starts with our kindness as their adults, our kindness as their teachers, their parents, their friends, their neighbors. Grace and understanding of each other in this room today, right now, it is important. And if nothing else, I hope when we leave, we can all see and believe this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, if there are anybody else? Okay, if there are no objections, I will adjourn this meeting. Hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned.